Thank you.
Yeah, let's call this work session to order. I see we have full house, definitely have a forum. And, uh, would you like to make a motion about the agenda?
I move that be adopted, as Jim asked recently. Second.
My favor.
Finally.
Okay. I guess. Okay, visitor. No reason. Hello.
Oh, sorry. Nope, nobody's here.
Nope.
But no. Nope, nobody's here.
Okay. And we have no minutes to approve.
Nope.
So we'll go right into the workshops. And, uh, discussion review of twenty twenty five, twenty six. This development sort of event. Those recently approved and anticipated. Upcoming amendments, no formal action would be taken. This is a work session. Scott, your chair.
So I want to acknowledge that we have attendance. For twenty years, in case you're wondering. This person that we're here. We haven't made a hire for a new fire yet, but we've. Heard, which I barely know. First things said. From back, from back, and go see the rip and do that, they were ever been called for us. So we're trying to figure out what's at the front of the two. Come on. You want to ask it? Hopefully, our. They do a lot through the concept of. Uh, also joined here with Principal Flannan, Howard Martin, who kind of double team this presentation for those. And, uh, we want to do kind of free flow discussion. So feel free to ask questions anytime. Might be a natural breaking point after Matt does his portion, which is the portion of looking back at some of the more recent development code amendments to give you an update on what's transpired since you recommended your approval. So sometimes, uh, things evolve a little bit and up the recommend approval. You don't know what's here, what happened to council, so. And also, uh, forward to comments that we have out, uh, that we already undertaken. Um, and go through a little discussion about that. Uh, and also look to your feedback in terms of things that, uh, I've been bothering you with the cover. Or things that you would recommend that we take a look at, things that you would we recommend that we can pass on the council, uh, for consideration. Uh, oftentimes we take our, you know, our direction from council, the council goal since the major drive of what, um, going through the process. But, um, sometimes that is a result of discussion over a period of time. Some reasons quickly at the staff, some of the quick way from the public. Sometimes they can't look through the project and say, you guys still do this, so we're talking to the council. So maybe it's a sensible question. And also just, uh, you know, talk about that. Some things that they've come up that we don't, we don't know about. This comes up out of necessity, sometimes it's a something that's initiated by the applicant, uh, some of you, whatever, probably still tourist commission of government that's were resolved of the applicant that you get it, uh, application. There are some that may be out there that we just don't know or are coming through the project. But what we wanted to start with, I, um, was to have now, Agent Drew, uh, new students for said, that government was coming through. Well, once got to recently, it was kind of set on the other.
Evening, afternoon, missionaries. So here's a look back, uh, you may all remember our time with the pencil space standards adoption that this is developed code. Carry those forward to the city council shortly after your public hearing. March. Your recommendation to, uh, Doc has drafted. Brought those to city council, uh, from early April for public hearing, uh, but noting that, uh, they didn't complete the adoption process until May twenty eighth, so they really, public hearing itself was, um, shortened, um, not, um, very lively, but it was the deliberations. They really, uh, um, real down and had some special interest in refining the proposal, the actual standards. But was not a, uh, a discredit or a not in the process was they, uh, they, they they took a special interest and really wanted to refine it. Use additional, a new, new information that they had to, uh, to, uh, make the standards a bit more stringent and, um, comprehensive than what we had before. Uh, their process was not only the development standards, but the a separate adoption resolution for the original plan list that we did share and discuss, but wasn't part of the that planning missions decision, a team or regulation based process. So, uh, the today's staff report does enter the adopted language at from the ordinance. Where you reference, I just wanted to highlight what I think might have some strong changes than that they made. Uh, the others, build with refinement and restructuring and clarifying language. But, um, how that, I think, yeah, the ones that I summarized here on the slide are most prominent, but thinking about applicability. What was before you was that it will be applicable to all new buildings or additions, including deaths that I'd see two hundred square feet in area. When we subject to the defenseful space standards, they pulled back from that and applied it only to new buildings. Uh, and not additions, access of two hundred square feet. I think there were two points that they may raise, was with the additions. One that there wouldn't be the, uh, so the desired effect of applying the pencil space on the portion of the structure and not existing portion, which would be how supplied. So it's affecting this maybe be limited. And also you have a existing built environment, but there may be existing mature and invested landscaping and gardens that they didn't want disrupted that time. But also, um, there is a continued interest in looking to apply the mental space standards to existing built environments, existing built sites. And, uh, looking to use that mechanism to apply to additions to existing structures. So there are more to come now, but, uh, as in stance, this will be up to new builds, new construction. And from our standpoint, I think that's a little bit more streamlined to apply because we're looking at site and reviews or new developments rather than applying it to built environments. The second is the type of vegetation. As noted and discussed, uh, was the prohibited plant list. Uh, they did make some, some tweaks to, uh, the type of grasses that, uh, are included on the plan of the plan list. But they did have, um, some trepidation on applying, um, a prohibition to, um, all pine trees, uh, given that we have, um, it's a prominent species, we have in town, a treasure species that we look to to save throughout, so they put back on that, provided an exception for preservation of a ponderosa and large fruits, uh, so that they can be retained. Uh, recognizing that, uh, upon maturity, uh, ponderosa as well as applying, you have a a high flammability, but they are, are adapted and, um, have a mature. That bark is of a condition that it is resilient, doesn't burn as significantly as other pine trees. And then lastly, the vessel space area standards themselves. Uh, and this is where they really restructured it. Now, while the code doesn't specifically outline the immediate, the intermediate and the extended zones, that first initial five feet, the five feet, the thirty feet and thirty feet. That's really was the concept they were getting at to that, that, that first image that I had to look back to. This graphic represents those, those three areas. And so with, uh, the changes they provided there, it was significantly less, um, planning missions recommendation or based on the original. To allow some vegetation within that initial immediate five foot area. The council said, no, let's pull back from that and not allow any vegetation within the initial five feet. So there are some exceptions for those significant trees, um, or special circumstances that can be approved under exception, but we're looking for a non combustible. Essentially hardscaper from that initial, uh, five feet edition zone. And then from the five to thirty feet, I think that substantial change is the original proposal did allow for retention of existing uh, plantable species that were on the list. Um, council wanted to pull back from that and say, no, let's remove that. Uh, even the existing sort of stance, um, they're not allowed within that, the thirty feet. Another extension is also, um, no combustibles within the initial thirty feet as well. So that's any, um, any other, um, combustible materials, uh, from bark mulch to, um, you know, like ghost trees or decorative, um, combustible material that's within that area. So rather than propane thing. That might be considered combustible. That, eh, in this circumstance, no, we're not, we're not looking at as, as a combustible material. This is very looking at vegetation, uh, or, or natural materials.
Right.
There was a lot of discussion about propane tanks, but recognizing that, sure, they, they would be beneficial to be farther away from structures, but there's, uh, practical challenges of, of smaller lots. And recognizing that there's, there is a, well, not they'll, there is a, there are mechanisms that, uh, can, um, reduce the risk of propane tank. Yeah, we're. That, that risk is, was removed, right? Because you don't have the vegetation on the grid on ground, so. And then, but I think those were the prominent components. I think it came to that after multiple, um, deliberation sections, sessions. I think it came to a good product that has been acknowledged and, and and don't want to say celebrated, but, uh, um, I will say celebrated, uh, by others, communities and fire professionals. And that contact with other communities that have, uh, have acquired about, uh, our process and our standards and looking to mirror this for a model. So we're in, in the right direction there.
This goes into effect May twenty eighth, along the bill?
It went into effect, uh, thirty days after May twenty eighth, so they had to.
And then things in the pipeline before then, when I said that they've been.
Correct, so that's our own goal, those rules, so we don't want to change, we can't change the standards or anything that was already in process.
I had a comment on the general process. Um, it's great, love that we're being a industry leader in doing this. I think, uh, you would also probably consider to offer some training to developers or something. Developmenters, something to, uh, help them navigate that because it is kind of a victim. I don't know if that's appropriate, but my idea.
If, if turning landscape, you think of the way we could get.
Yeah, so it'd be a component of, of the application.
No, I get, but, uh, treating for, look, look, we've, uh, these plants, these plants are more accessible or that they're on screen on that. World of research and something that neither the practice or pizza, because it's kind of a big change.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Plants next to your house, I'm just, I'm wondering, things like that, I'm just, uh, taking from a developer homeowner standard.
Sure. Could be a community outreach thing, yeah.
I'm a little concerned, I'm not concerned, but I, you know, that, you know, we're looking at, you know, returning growth. One of the answers is higher density. When we do these cottages like down the street or everything. And if the five foot line around every structure end up with like a cement block with these cottages, and I mean, it's just not too attractive, so, you know, balancing.
It's a departure from our traditional landscaping standards. Would have, uh, bark mulch and arborite right up against, uh, building.
That's absolutely should happen. I'm just trying to concern.
So churches.
We're starting a cottage, you know, if you have this higher density. There may not, you know, just like being just a fair lot with.
Maybe they're colored rocks or something.
Yeah, I guess, oh, you know, no. That's the alternative, absolutely, you're sure you'll hit for what exactly will do over five, I can't think.
Better than having a burning down.
But yes. Did the council take that into account at all, status?
Uh, I think. Um, I mean, innovation and, and adaptations to, to what, uh, what good new different, uh, landscaping practices are, so that there'll certainly be some growth gains on how to, how to provide that attractive environment, especially once small lots, thinking about the cottage developments, you know, they're going to be close to the, closer to those property lines, but in those environments.
So the insurance company is going to allow this, compared to all the old typical landscaping, right? Things aren't out with fire insurance.
Right, and so that's a goal, is that applying these standards to throughout the community, um, that, you know, perhaps inspire, incentivize the insurance companies to serve our area. But I want to touch on cottage developments, there are required common areas that are beyond those, those immediate zones. So that's where we're going to, and have some of that, that redistribution of, of landscaping, uh, to other areas that may not be right. Then I do want to touch on, um, Mr. Trump, your own question about application developers and the build community. Um, with most projects, we have initial contacts before they even get to application stage. Either those initial conversations or leading into pre-application meetings, so we have those steps along the way that we're we do have that interface to be able to share with those individuals. And we've been throughout, even before adoption, same. Pay attention, these standards. One other point.
That's the big issue, so we need to, uh, we saw a conference, a whole conference about concern about, uh, the, the this would clearly be those who's probably basically the right ones to them in small lives. Concerned about that. Um, so it was, there was some sentiment to that effect that brought into the process and made it this semi-during. Like, but, uh, uh, there's also the exception provision, don't think to this, that, uh, if you can come up with a scenario that, uh, would be fire official. Um, there's potential for some very short application of this. Nice, the one, one thought that came out was if, you know, if you have using hardened materials, you know, and they completely make that what premium or a not random fireplace that maybe there's some scenario where we're group for some plans to be a little bit closer than that. That may be to get refunded, uh, saved with it, so. So there is that exception thing built into it, so that if there's a scenario that you don't already visually know, or someone comes up with a great plan, fire official, this reminds a lot of the extra teams, fire official. Um, you know, maybe there's a scenario where the kid was somewhere else. Thank you.
That's a good segue there.
Just one last thing, I, I, my only concern about other things like equity. What we said, uh, you know, you don't have as much property, you know, much space, you don't have the opportunity to put nice things as somebody who lives you know, thirty feet, but who has thirty feet of space and this stuff.
Yeah, but I got one, I got is, you know, hey, let's put them in containers and bring, bring little wheels and fires coming off the wheel.
But, yeah, I think it comes with, uh,
Yeah.
The, the innovation and different techniques. Um, that's, you know, so we're talking about the regulatory measures that are in the development code. That's not to say that these standards cannot be applied to the existing built environment. We've been contacted by multiple homeowners associations that are looking to either get firewise certification or just provide a more hardened landscape. And so they're looking at these standards and applying those to their neighborhoods. And so it's ongoing and then those educational opportunities in the city in collaboration with Fire District and other like-minded organizations are, are spreading the word of benefits, these standards and and how to apply, so ongoing at this area. But as we noted, uh, we touched on the, the landscape, uh, with regard to wrestling wildfire impacts. Now we're looking at the built environment itself, so looking back at what's been adopted and looking forward to what our opportunities are that are maybe a combination of what we do with, um, with our municipal code, which does not interface, you know, based with what you do. But maybe some changes to the development code later on. So, um, we all, I think we're all familiar with the statewide wildfire map that was set up in Senate Bill sixty-two. That, um, that was intended to identify those plot standards for those properties that were designated, I hazard the arrogance. And in that would be the adoption of statewide vegetable space standards and, um, building hardening standards for new construction in those areas. However, you know that, the, the that map was controversial and ultimately repealed by the legislature and adopted by the governor this year under Senate Bill eighty-three. So that mechanism to locally adopt, um, those, um, building hardening standards for residential construction or what was referred to as R three twenty seven, that opportunity was, was taken away because there was that relationship with the map itself. So under Senate Bill eighty-three, uh, the legislature recognized that, um, there still would be some benefit to local communities and providing that and avenue for local decisions on where or how to apply those, those building hardening standards. So built, built into Senate Bill eighty-three is, um, directed the building code division, state building code division to adopt uh, pathways, rules for adopting that R three, three twenty seven standards. Since the governor signed this late July, the building provisions and working on those rules and just yesterday or earlier this week had published those temporary rules and providing that pathway for us as a city to consider adoption of the, that building code. So need to review and understand what those temporary rules require from a process standpoint, notice standpoint, um, and how it can be applied. But expecting that to be applicable to new buildings, new construction in the community. Um, similar to our physical state standard, so there's some, some consistency with how it would apply. Jump forward a bit too quickly, go back to the image. Uh, this is from the Institute of Business and Home Safety Institute, one of their demonstrations. And clearly once on fire, the others, and, and you can, you can see that or think that they just lit the one side on fire. But this is an ember shower demonstration, uh, it's hard to pick up, but there, this is where they uh, simulated, uh, a wildfire in Highlands and the embers are just blowing their structures. So those embers themselves caught this, uh, non-hardened portion of the structure on fire. So what you do have on the other non, um, engulfed portion are those fire resistant roofing materials, um, party plank or other fire resistant siding, double pane, um, non-vinyl windows and other measures that, um, that prevent or, or reduce the risk or impact that off fire. So that's what built hard mean is versus, um, all wood or or combustible and firing. And so wanted to note that under R three twenty seven, that only applies to residential structure. Does not apply but there's a gap, known gap that's in applying building hardening standards for those personal environments. Now, under commercial construction, there are sprinkling and other building code standards that help protect the structure that people would opt in the structure, but not necessarily from the threat can be from the inside. So is that, uh, maybe the next push, may regular story standpoint, if the state level to provide building hardy commercial perhaps. But we don't have that opportunity to build here. Um, but that said, we, the council discussed and is, is interested in, in looking at the opportunities that would interface with planning mission and adopting design standards into the development code. So it, in, in A's look and function a lot like what the building code says. But it, it be administered for a development code and maybe not quite as technical as building code is written, but more from a menu of options of what those, um, building materials, construction techniques may be. Again, requiring a high, higher class, last aid roofing materials, um, the fire resistance, um, siding, fire resistant windows and materials. Those soft, it's other things like that, so that we can apply it through the, the development process and achieve the same goal. That may, um, come with, I don't know, want to say controversy, but, uh, uh, quite a conversation because it changes what the building practices would be and how to apply. Um, but again, that would be a change to our development code, something that comes to me back. If that.
Is that residential and commercial?
So we would only apply this to only necessary for you, uh, for commercial destruction because we have, they have a document, a building code through R three twenty seven, that's the best resident.
So you'd be ahead and say, oh.
It pretty good. Yes, so, but at the same rate, yeah, we want to make sure that we're, uh, we're collaborating, collaborating, but if you don't get too far ahead um, and make sure that don't get out of step with them. Stay, they're good places, so to speak. But I expect if that moves forward, that there would be, um, robust discussion with you guys through workshops. Uh, probably multiple workshops because we've been thinking about so many different type of environments, built environments, I feel concerned, so. Where they come on that.
It's likely council, I take this one piece, one step at a time, I'll probably go forward to sort of the voucher of our three twenty seven, see where things are at that point compared to them. Um, in direct staff that, that pursue the design standards. Uh, or maybe we're single for the state to divide process to that part three twenty seven commercial as well. Have, have paid it one step at a time and then, then not, not try to break all of us.
So, yeah, and just a chance to acknowledge that, you know, we have our eighteen eighties western frontier design theme in downtown. We did through our historic landmarks commission and program contract with any designer, provide some some evaluation and recommendations on how to apply building hardy uh, to our design theme. So we do have a toolkit or playbook on how to craft some code and how it can be achieved in designing, but there's some, some ground are.
When is that work going to begin? For talking about virtual, for me, you said what we're going to do, but my question, when?
I haven't, yeah, yeah, so this is that first, first conversation. I think Scott, you did, picking these sequentially, I think our first step is to determine on the adoption of R three twenty seven residential construction. But I, I can see us, uh, initiate these conversations this winter, so later this year, first part.
So like you did creep in from the outside for some of the different zones sort of wiring in different zones that maybe are easier to apply some of these commercial hardy to and get your feet wet a little bit before you tackle the downtown commercial western theme thing.
That more I don't see similar construction, but not as, uh, yeah, complex design means.
Then in my opinion, pretty critical to our survival of the downtown thing, yeah.
So on to blood, like what we call now special flood master area. So wait, before we move on, um, uh, we, so we do have some flood plain in town associated with Y two street, um, as on the image, uh, it's a a narrow band of flood plain, only area in town that's impacted and zoned, but, but, uh, that's something to be, uh, aware of and manage properly, in particular, developing with that flood plain areas. There's a limited number of parcels, um, so that's a benefit with the community. And also, um, much of the development along the creek uh, has been approved since, um, what I'll call modern flood lane management practices, meaning that those developments are required to have upwind areas for each one of the lots outside of the flood. So you're required, if you do have upwind area outside the flood lane adequate to build on, you shall. So we already have a prohibition on new development within the, the flood lane, uh, if you have adequate area, but there are losing fifteen that uh, structures or improvements are in the flood lane that we need to consider that. But why we're bringing this forward?
What is?
No, I do not. So it's only, only flood plain is greater on like, yeah. So it's only the only blood that is greater on like, yeah.
All this time and effort, um, well, I can speak to it. So uh there. We have been directed by FEMA to adopt some additional. Standards to minimize or have no net loss, critical habitat for salmon. In the region, uh that says the result of the lawsuit from the Port of Ottawa Society that sued. Uh, the federal government and the others saying that uh the National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, did not provide necessary protections to those endangered species of critical habitat. Uh, we happen to be, and that's in Oregon or region. We happen to be at the far reaches of those uh those habitat areas, so we may not be seeing at least currently. Um, those salmon or other associated species of whom to Y two street or beyond, but uh due to um. Low improvements and barrier reduction. They're coming, they're they're getting closer. So but also what we do up here and in fact habitat downstream.
And Y two street here and the national water scene waterway registry, so we have rules that we have to follow, it's going to protect the salmon. And that's why the known that way barrier now.
But it's all part of those uh those coordinated efforts. So that lawsuit was in in two thousand nine, we are in twenty twenty-five and and. Implementation of these protections have been in place. And so through this process, um and a result of the lawsuit was. National Marine Fisheries Service did issue a biological opinion saying yes. Uh, development within the floodplain and impact was those happening, that's confirming that you shall do so. Uh FEMA has has previously issued. Uh, but just to note that uh through these processes, FEMA issued some initial um. Draft rules for implementation and then uh this was that. Uh, ball up and now just acknowledging that this is a uh a pattern of lawsuits. Uh, to inspire or emphasize or give this project. So in twenty twenty-one FEMA issued those draft rules. In twenty twenty-three, um environmental organizations said, you're not moving fast enough. So let's get this done. So that then then we'll we'll get to the the end there, um that, uh so twenty twenty-three, they. Judgment emphasized that uh you shall move more quickly and implementing the the bio. Month of the next is that FEMA responded and repaired. Some implementation standards and opportunities to um. To meet the the intent and requirements of the. The justice. Um, and that included three options for local communities to decide on. One, the flat out prohibit all development. Second, to adopt the model code that FEMA has and continues to refine for requirements for development and floodplain. Or as we've selected is to review them on a permit by permit basis. Uh, meaning I recognize that, again, limited development pressure within our floodplain and. Given that the the conditions on each property may be and will be. Um, it waits to address and provide no net loss that had it has um can be. Favor to that particular project, that properties. Uh, we're in a position to take action, um. Soon, however. Pending litigation as of twenty twenty-five, um by organics for floodplain protection. Uh, saying that this process violates multiple laws, uh federal, states, um. Free states uh requirements for adoption and application of development code. So that litigation's ongoing. Parties have decided and agreed to discuss and find a look work towards a solution. So instead of pursuing an adoption to date. Or monitor that litigation and and see where it lands. So that that judgment or decision. Um, will influence our steps, um the capacity and the structure of. FEMA moving forward could influence um our next steps. Um, but you want to acknowledge that our code was. Or updated in twenty sixteen with relatively modern standards. Um, again prohibiting new development if you have upwind areas. So there's a level protection that that we think we have a pretty strong code now. And um relatively easy exit as needed to respond. So we're we're ready for that.
So when you say, you're talking about the hundred.
What's commonly referred to as the hundred.
And so from from for now, we're going to stay with our standards.
Yeah.
So start with approving or or not approving.
Yeah. Yeah. Correct. And that again, recognizing that, and going back to the map, that legit floodplain that we have in the area. Um, not a big impact on this community or a number of properties, but you can see how important it is. And controversial or significant for other communities that have um working water trees, working river runs or. Or or bays, um either Columbia, Atlanta or Broncos. So a really big deal with that.
Just thinking about and we expand our maybe be um. There may be more. Kind of especially with like master plan, considering what. Blood paint that come into town look like and. How we want to add code that is prepared for the increase in flood rate and.
Absolutely. Like like Matt referred to, uh, some of the waters and subdivisions, so it gives you an opportunity to design around floodplain. Whereas we have a lot of lots there that we're planning probably for the floodplains now. And so probably you've got to come clear with that existing conditions. This is an opportunity to block slate that they've found for. And staff. You have questions on the floodplain for.
Well, just note that that may. This may have served as the workshop and for any updates to the special flood hazard area because we may come in um relatively. Relatively hot with the with the public hearing to get it all booked before um um deadlines.
All right. Well, thanks, Matt. Uh, it's good, good to look back, uh review what's what's happened. We must look forward to when we kind of direct it. Uh, so uh here's here's a couple of lists of known. Projects that we'll take them through in the next uh fiscal year or so. And maybe this stem from council goals, most councilable for twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, basically starting July first, twenty in the June twenty-six. You know, we try to get this thing that in that time period. It doesn't mean that somebody might not get kicked out till uh kick forward to the next fiscal year. Um, just based on events. Uh, so start with residential design standards, uh the council here was in process updating the science standards of the community long ago. And uh that was uh. It's kind of general statement, it covers a lot, it covers a lot of ground there. Um, I think that one of the uh reasons or. Uh, impedances for putting that goal into place was um now we've experienced some of the things that have been developed, it's kind of come through and some. Uh, somehow how they developed out, but there's been some observations amongst the council. Um, in terms of maybe some feedback they get from the community in terms of. Is our design standards that certainly not to achieve what we want to. Uh, specifically, one of the ways to like repetition, having two, two summer eggs to each other.
Even worse yet, overall two for two.
Not not very slim. Well, yeah, I mean, there's 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 exactly, there's multiple examples. Like it's, we know that we're not going to get the variety anymore that we have in the whole town. It's just, it happened a day or two living long. Production buildings and and so their their. Uh, efficiency fly, make the bricks look a little bit more similar. So our our goals is to try to. Think of the door a little bit more, they're different, they're a little bit different going there, there's going to be a lot similar.
Yeah, like some of them have five designs and they already, you know, every fifth house is.
Yeah, it's a it's kind of a balance between, you know, uh kind of giving, giving character and uh, you know, bouncing fortability, right? In terms of how we're restricting that they're applying or start to. Uh, but are there more that we can that continue or are we going to make some modifications to the standards probably without taking that one? And so, uh. I I that's one thing that we're quickly going forward. I didn't want to drive a specific project, but this is just kind of an example of. Uh, some of the, we're making some of the reasons, they they we took that visit with, side visit with council, they're they're. They love their overall developments. I just wonder if there's some things that they can do that don't at a whole lot of cost. To develop to a little more differentiation, to just a little bit more distinguishing of color. Uh, that was something that we strive, strove, right, to do with Sunset Meadows, um. To get some differentiation. We can see, uh, you know, if you do like to it, so there's not a differentiation between the two. They have to attach each other, though, between the the ones, there's some differentiations and window categories and roof forms over the freeway. And even though this one doesn't maybe show it, there's there is some variety of color there. Um, Castle saying maybe we need to kind of keep that the color differentiation with more differences. Maybe there's some other things we can do to that. But we have thought of to help kind of achieve that at the all. So just just a little background in terms of uh how we regularly uh design and community gets a variety of different ways. We regulate through the uh uh master planning development phase, uh which one of the most recent ones are Sunset Meadows and Sister Fourns. Um, so there's an opportunity there to do some architectural review. Uh, we also have standards by zone, the residential multi-family. Residential zone, the north sister business, our downtown, we all have their own set of design standards. And then the commercials, uh we have a couple of that in the regions, uh western design. Standards are very much so. Uh, and then we adopt the temporal design standards, so that has to do with. You know, not dictating architectural style, but that basic bigger design by having. Uh, you know, your entrance face the streets, having, you know. Transparency of the windows on the front of the side. Uh, making sure it's just not all garage, garage, garage on on your lots, if there's some. Ability for some some of the the whole part to to be visible from the street. So we do have a variety of different ways. And uh here's just an example that I pulled up. The code for the for the master plan, it's similar to the multifamily uh zone where. Uh, there's a sense if they're continuous horizontal distance as maybe from end wall to end wall. Of the natural stuff, the multifamily structure is creating a ton of features that should contain. A minimum of five of the following features, that we get a whole menu list of different. Things that a designer can decide to report to be that. Um, so that's, you you look through there, there's there's, it's pretty. Specific in terms of what what you can do to to meet our requirements. But then we also have some provisions that are more subjective and. Uh, for example, the master plan here, uh this is a provision that we can use to try to work with the. The builders trying to get some variation in the in the yes, says uh uh master plan includes. Artificial features that complement and enhance positive characteristics of the site surrounding area. Setbacks from street showing staggered or building otherwise provided with architectural feature, go sure variety and interest along the street. Eright, what was, what would, what would be your definition of uh. Staggered enough studied or right, what artificial feature would complement the uh the characteristics of the site? Um, yours will be different uh to the point, I think, is that everybody has a different uh kind of understanding of what that. And so it's difficult to administer, it's a call for an allocate to know where to uh target this. Uh, but we we use that the best that we've done, we've developed a network for this to try and get as much variety as we could out. On some of these projects that have been built.
Seems like you're getting the most good with just allowing sort of individual preferences and color to kind of range for me. Like I said, you get varieties, people choosing. Like when we talk about four person cable and we run into, we're just talking about those are a little bit of a higher risk, you have dormers in quarters on. So all of these road sections intersect with each other or intersect with different values. It's. I go to my age way and like, hey, I want to get a different color brown, they go, no, run.
From the right cloud, bro.
Yeah, of course, you know, don't bring any solar panel, don't be this there, I saw. But the one or else it would be the same, that's not nice.
Yeah.
My source.
What are you, yeah, all white? Your choice is black for life. I think you're talking about not choosing the colors, it's the same, if you're going to use color as a way to differentiate your capabilities, no matter how red or.
Yeah.
Just that it has to be. There's probably some terminology, color, nothing, enough shades different or whatever, enough, whatever it is, if that's the tool it is.
It's inoffensive and let him do it. I disagree.
Color is is a really cheap tool, but we have to build a different.
I agree, there are actual key sequence. I think in like in the mid. Two thousand fifteen, there was a run on gray and white. And there was a big discussion around whether I tried to figure out a way like slow the whole on white on gray. And I I I think ultimately it was right and then it went away on its own. Yeah, I think that's what happens. Yeah, people, it's yeah, seeing what they see. Do you remember that?
I hear from there.
The gray.
Was the architect that was saying.
I wanted to say that I think getting to the same capacity five should be different from. Building A, we can build A, A one and whatever maybe is. Very strenuous on the side there and it also comes back to architectural trends, but also the developer trends and practices. There are a lot of um. People right now, they definitely modern, they look and so happening uh along with in the housing setbacks adds money because it adds material. As well. So that's kind of a a trade off. Being there, there'll be. Getting to the particular sense of the code and and being pretty strict there versus. Trying to like guide, like I do that same kind of mind, okay, there's one play that I can have there, but if you have a minimal setback, but. If we say two feet is enough, then it's a minimum of two feet, you can go by it, you can be right, if there's enough. Room play, um I would just caution with saying too specific.
Do you, do you like the list like you're getting me though, like that, or do you?
Well, I think that's the other piece of that, depending on who the designer is.
Right.
They're going to choose different pieces, right? Because some cost more than others. And it also depends on the developer on the file, so. You create guidelines, right? But I think it's going to be hard to get too specific and that's part of my issue with my age way too. Going to have ten colored cans around.
Yeah.
But we all get the intent, right? The intent is not to have a model culture or a model look of. Much of things because that ruins the sister list of sisters, right? That's what we're saying. You're clear, sisters, sisters enough, right? That's sisters. But it's a challenge if you have prescriptive requirements for design or. Colors staggered, that alone is its own, that variety is its own repetition. Um, so it's um. How do you legislate it? And and not too prescribed.
And a lot of these other in the process, right, is in the orientation of the building, because if you have. One building that's just hobby versus even rotating, it helps create a different field environment and that allows very different movement through. These master plans bases, so. Hard to. So.
Yeah.
For any question, this might be specific to the state of Washington, but I don't think that's like anyone started moving Washington. They're looking at like a big map like development area and they in Washington require like different builders, so there are five builders and one developer. So I don't know how that could play into something like this, I'm like, oh, we have multiple builders, so. And you're assigned like you get the same lots, that's the playing area.
Typically, something that would be kind of developer like initially. City would require now, and I'm not a city coordinator, but yeah, like Northwest Crossing is what they can lay a lot of civil builders and designers that. Design maximum of their homes in the. That are.
Approximately to their other.
Yeah, but also obviously in the last developments. It hasn't been used, you know, you know, it's it sounds, I mean, it can be a little higher. It hasn't been years, you know, you know, it's it sounds, I mean, it can be a little higher than custom one. And you know, custom policies that can, which is great for when they look great. Which was a great long variety, but I mean, I'm ready to. For the two of us.
Yeah, maybe kind of thinking about that for ability to have. Next, you know, moving forward, bigger blocks out.
They did do it in the behind the industrial park in the corner, though, I gotta run. But yeah, clarified, they loosened that up to all kinds of builders. But in fact, they just sold lots.
Yeah.
That's a that's a worthwhile, there's a variety of things. There's a few little gadgets that are similar, but even on my. My in-law lives across the street and they make them do modern farmhouse, modern farmhouse, modern farmhouse, even all the ones that look the same.
Yeah.
Same, both friends, but different sides.
The problem is if you own the property and you're the developer, you're like, I'm not gonna give up all that money, I mean, that's just, you know, that's how they make a living. So.
Clearly, there's other communities, so, um, it's right. No, not that, I just meant on the general business, um, done this sort of planning exercise to. Help the non-monotone look of thing, I mean, it's. When you guys did film trip to Sunset Meadows and you look down the street and stuff, I mean. Did you see that it matched kind of what we're, you know, did you go the intent of our rules? Or you're kind of like, well, yeah, there was. I think generally, I mean, I I I would kind of just re- really when I heard from the council, it was interesting. One, a different stream like kind of grabbing two of those things and like stopping awkwardly parking them. And maybe hearing, you know, back there from staff, I'm probably back for this, and we actually got. Uh with the developer and over Sunset Meadow or what we got, that are a focus of us. So there are all kind of, there's some, you know, the other side, the other view of what the channels are. And with that, and. After that, I think that they felt that that what there seemed, no things tweaks that we could do, I mean, at first I thought they sounded their concerns like. We were gonna have to rent a new sign, you know, so to get to what they're trying to achieve, but. On reflection, I think it's more tweaks, it was something. Ready to question.
Yes, I'm just, it's only three floor plan, or three buildings. You know, and you know, each street have one kind of building, the next street has another kind of, and then duplexes. And yeah, there's a little variety with a E here and that. Man, you look down that thing, it's just, it looks like a monopoly gate, you know, I mean, it's all, everything looks the same, yeah. And.
Well, right, you said a lot, did you know what they built the third house or two? Uh it was kind of, you talked about, it was uh built the first house or two, it was kind of exciting. But then, you know, after it got eight of them, then it kind of, you know, came to, you know, the predictability, this is kind of.
I remember when we were looking at a project, though, and we we didn't have a lot of the weight in terms of saying. These have, every somebody has a definitely different, so. I I was happy that we got a lot of waves through the neighborhoods and that we didn't have to go, we didn't have to walk and walk and have. You get around the next street.
Well, part of the deal is to keep the distance away from two forty two, right, that was. A big, that was a big compromise.
Yeah.
That 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 we wanted here. Because I recognize, sorry, uh but recognize the limitations to that code.
Right, that's I guess what I'm saying, like, you kind of look at it as, oh, as it exists, you know, should we? We that, you know, minor, we try to avoid. That could better.
The way I read this code vision, the only shallow that you shall stagger or have or. Architectural variety, so if you staggered your setbacks, it could be all the same room. So that doesn't, does that achieve the interest that the conversation we're having?
Probably not. Right, but see, they didn't even stagger, I mean.
Well, let it stagger, because then there are, so, so, there. Sir, I mean, if.
Like, not having all single family, um, all townhomes, maybe like in terms of title call, like, oh, each other the day, so. Um I was like. You know, maybe it's quite easy, I was like, bring that, you know, or that's kind of, I don't, I wouldn't say it's the best practice. It really comes down to whatever the developer and client wants to make their budget work. And so there's different ratios.
I feel like that's good for community, I mean, you want different. Right, that's what people, the mingle, or else we all get arguing in your attitude about how the other lives. Yeah, just pull off philosophical like society.
I totally agree.
I, yeah, yeah. Nothing but million dollar conventions, if you don't see anybody else in your life. What kind of life do you live?
Wouldn't raise a great, yeah, and then I come back down to the people who are above you, because architects and designers are hired to like.
Yeah.
Know about their vision, and if their vision is all single family homes. Then, and the code allows it, right, and they they just can move forward, we can create. Some guidelines which may come to the head, but like, we need to support more in the development and density. Plays where the colleges may have more clusters and then they have bigger things too, right, and we're planning all the votes together. That may encourage. More diversity in other types, but also more density, especially as we are in the prime and we really don't have, we only have one way to grow. Really, in the city, first time I.
Sir, one problem with all this, I mean, this all sounds great, but it does not help the median income. Uh the median housing cost, so. I mean, all that goes up with every now and then.
That's the next, that's the next slide.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't help.
Good discussion, uh.
So I'll take, we had more feedback, that would be, you're ready.
Oh, yeah, yes, I'll be, I'll be ready. Uh I'll just quickly note that uh unfortunately now, a few others have. Relative to the, you know, the concern of being too restrictive or whatever, not providing. The ability for alternative designs, I think that would really go down there, somebody came to us with something that. Then uh provided something different than all these things, but achieved the same goal.
Yeah, we want habit, we can be open to that.
You just say?
I said, yeah, we want habit, yeah.
And first having, I don't speak for every designer, I do, but I come from a place of community. Um based in like public interest design, so I may have more of that and.
You're an expert, you're an expert, shish. But. That's kind of what we're talking about, really, you know, having that more of a community, you know, exactly what you describe what you do, I don't know. Anything you want to achieve or hope to achieve.
So it looks more like South Hurry than than Linda Street or. One of, one of the other ones and that's what you got, that's kind of. That was, that's kind of the goal, to like, in the whole part of town. I mean, those are like forty foot wide blocks, most of them are originally water, though, and.
Yeah, but I'm not saying that, you know, because I I I think identity is part of the answer for urban growth too, but you know, it's trying to just make it. So it doesn't look. And I'm not gonna mention one and. Uh builder or one, you know, community, but it. You know, I walk by that every day and. In terms of you got mix of unit type, so if you think about that, so it's like, well, we're significant, we've got departments. We've got town, towns, basements, basically, we've got smaller, single families, they have a very long time, private forty two, so.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's all good, in some, in some respects, that has actually been.
I'm not seeing things around the streets or whatever, you know, like you, you have that thing. So if you look down the street, it doesn't all look, so, those are, you know, kind of. Dropping some of those, closer proximity to each other makes the.
Yeah, if you're, if you're um. Wanted to get a mix, and you could, and you're trying to keep things a little up, you could put some scattered cottage developments in. Next to some of each other, so you know, more green space, for example, I'm pretty very well. But those homes are definitely more fortunate, or like, there, there's an area over here.
The same, like, one thing I I noticed, and it's just because I spent some time in similar channels. Uh for conservation, you got that out there, and. Something that's subtle is uh window placement, we get, we get so close to each other. They can't keep their master bedroom. Uh wiped down, because we started writing, I think we're.
The other master bedroom.
Yeah, the same thing with the upstairs kind of on this room. Um so some smart developers, smart builders have, you know, are able to. Uh offset the windows, so you don't have that situation, and as we get smaller lots. That's kind of the trend, that's gonna be more an issue for when you elevate, and something maybe we're conscious, be conscious about, there are different stages. So, but the bigger one. Uh another thing we need to think about is uh complying with state law. Uh and and our code does not comply with state law with respect to. Clearing objective standards, uh which is a requirement that uh. Our local government may adopt and apply, will only clear an objection standards. Conditions that pursue the regular development, possibly including needed housing, which. It is just, if you see, you saw the list that I included, that's just about any housing, right, but. Your point, um also provides the ability for a uh. Um a alternative uh group account, so our code needs to be very objective and hopefully it's not. Results in. Homogenous development. But it also uh condole into a discretionary process that if. Somebody comes in and says, hey, I don't, I don't, I don't go through the. I don't want it, I don't want it to comply with this criteria, because I don't like it, I want to try something different. It gives them the ability to be able to go through that process, but it also puts them in this this stage where they might even be. Subject to standards that are not. But gives 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 two, it's a two track interview process. So, you know, in your scenario, I mean, that's something that if you can afford something that uh without was. Better and differently, something that wasn't uh addressed that code specifically, there's some crap in that, in the cap. We just gave some examples of our code, uh you know, where uh it's not compliant with with that that law. Uh this is our conditional use permit criteria, and again, we don't have a lot of residential uses that are conditional use, but we do have. Uh I agree with you. Triplex uses that are a lot in our residential zone, that's. Changes the efficiency measures for even more housing development. And 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 we didn't fill areas. So uh just an example of some of this criteria, you know, the location, size, design. Operating characteristics of the proposed use will be compatible with and will not have a significant adverse effect. Considerations are being given with scale, although raw at this point, kind of bold, it'd be, you know, that with the. Perfect uh um living in here, uh desirable neighborhood area, for instance. Uh so there's this just example of how it goes. That's a lot of situations where.
It's like a lot of.
Suggestive criteria.
What came in like the gas station, you're.
Yeah, that's almost, that would. Yeah. Which per state law, we wouldn't have done violation, because it's not moving the power group. But they didn't need it, services, but that's like, wow. Uh so. One. Well, yeah, one of the, one of the. Yeah, it's kind of how you think what the goal is, actually made some efficient criteria, that'll be our challenge. One of the goals it gives to uh do this, since I identified all the years on the code, it's. Your code on it, since people have to start with, go find out where all these provisions are, there are problems. Um and so, um we have applied for a grant through the state. To hopefully hire a consultant out with, identify, do that struggle, find what those that are. And then provide some uh recommendations for. Let me just, maybe if there's. For the number process. I used to have a time, I think, I think it's about five, uh, a few more items, sorry, just. I want to say for a few more minutes. Okay. Uh another one of the goals, kind of long, was to monitor, we invite a consideration of additional additional strategies in the housing plan. And efficiency measures report. Uh efficiency measures was a process that we went through in twenty twenty two, it was kind of a. Step that uh they would be done before we applied for a draft, and that was just to. Uh see where our code could be amended to encourage more infill, to make sure that. We were using our existing vacant lands and. We develop the lands as an efficient perhaps possible, and through that process, the planning permission council identified a bunch of different areas that we could. Uh make changes to to help encourage more infill. Uh to take a little bit of stress and 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 uh we may have not been brought on. So including, including increasing the maximum actual density allowances in our back, you know, off the friendly zone. Uh we reduced the lot sizes, we have a lot taken, it's only forty five hundred square feet, kind of three thousand. Uh we add uh this, and we also reduce the lot sizes for D bikes, tri bikes and four bikeses. And creating the density bonus system, if you provide a four mile housing over there. Then we select the units for reduced uh lot sizes. Uh we. In two projects, maybe three projects that are habitatized, done this by developments to on large, which is probably the sort of last. And then the wonderful way of the woodworks, putting that up for that, release lot size. Uh we didn't know necessarily that people would be applying to the products, the minimum cottage. Lot size, which is already small, you know, in two thousand fifteen. So there's definitely a code that would uh include it, so then they're taking lots, forty percent of that, taking lots there. Two sixteen hundred, so a few. Does, and yeah, uh pretty small, but uh habitat, we're gonna consider that, and so with some more force and. Uh that's something we wanna, maybe kind of. Circle back to and just make sure that the commission councils are fair with that, so it's essentially. And that's a, you know, a lot of views. Um we added some housing units into our residential zone, triplexes and fourplexes. Which were, previously, uh being so much, maybe there was a lot of the higher zone. Uh but the council said, we're we're cool with that, that's just additive initial use. And then we created these smaller zones in the downtown commercial. Uh that would allow someone to just do residential redevelopment, whereas previously, it can have the mixed use. And that we heard from. Even that, that was a obstacle to building residential. Uh because besides, which is what's currently the way of right now, is more expensive to operate. Uh that's something, so on that side of the downtown, specific downtown cascade. A hood and name, but in any area, so you see outside of those areas, you can do that. That's just kind of a theory of kind of what we looked at. We also considered increasing uh a lot of the only person in the far zone, in the downtown commercial. Specifically, there are potential, there's a lot of different residential. Uh where we current transactions, uh there's a practical fifty feet, but there is a provision that says. That top fifty uh feet cannot be residential. So thirty five feet with the. The highest point that you can allow uh to a residential building, but. But you can build a sense, but that's more of a roof. That's where else that could be, you know, you have an elevator, yes. Uh so we considered that, and we went round around, um often in the capital side, most of them, but. Uh they're worse than all of them, so. Uh fire equipment available to basically, there's a fire situation, they're all risked, not have the last truck. They'll rescue, but that's a good fuel for that was my concern. So we didn't really go forward that one, we also considered the use park requirements, we didn't, we didn't bring out here at the time. So those are, those are two things that, you know, maybe we could uh we consider, I think, the part, part is incidentally, we're allowed to park, so. And then other changes to consider, uh once we went through this process, uh we reduced the lots, the lot sizes, but we did reduce the minimum lot less. So the minimum lotless were still still what they used to be, so we can't really achieve that smaller. Lot size with the lotless, so we'll go back, we'll revise that. There was some discussion at council. And we could be back for the council, about six months, thirty years ago, there's a saying, hey, let me get some to support them. Uh the discussion about uh the garage was going to be clear. Downtown commercial, the whole type of family, commercial, uh it needs a one garage, one space garage that fires with. Everything except for particularly, which is everything above four meters. Is that, is that a deterrent to infopackaging, for what we're just reporting, that's for. We just need that one to where the developer can decide what. Or, you know, right, for odds in the front door, or this is a parking, or a dog, or no garage, parking. Now, so. Thoughts on that, kind of shot there, you know, I do some thoughts on. Revisit, coming to revisit some of these things in the future. Any questions or thoughts on these? Any questions or thoughts on these? Runnings.
Really, with the, 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 that the, the requirements, I think, that this. Um, I think, as we move forward, density, chemical, building up the model. It's going to be really important. And also thinking about, and a lot of the time about the downtown commercial. Allowing residential home use and that third thing like, bottom door commercial next. And then like, three important requests in the twelve, uh. Um, and just getting about where it's at. Encouraging to do that kind of. Development, and then, yeah, that, that height is really, uh, something that we need to. Keep talking about.
I think that, um, downtown commercial is intended for, we have some. Land in the city that's really not downtown commercial, but its own downtown commercial.
Like Aspen State.
Well, yeah, even off of, uh. Uh, you know, with the environment.
Yeah.
It's a big deal.
Actually, the U B. Nation.
Yeah.
Could become.
It was that, yeah, what is that, downtown commercial, you had to have downtown commercial, combined with the residential.
Yeah.
Now, now, but the reason was.
We definitely did some dirty man, trying to make that downtown commercial.
There was a minimum or something you had to hit?
No, no, we just did some, we, we made that whole stress right there, downtown commercial. And I have timber, but I remember it, it is kind of awkward, you're right.
But we changed it so that you can do residential, uh, a couple of years ago, I think.
Yeah, but I think moving forward, the town's going to double in size, so I'm assuming that the downtown commercial needs will also increase. So.
We don't go, we don't go out.
Yeah, and I'm thinking about how we stay continuous with the current commercial. As we keep extending in different directions. And I'm nervous that what would happen is that it's developed, it's all residential, you know, from downtown commercial. And then pretty soon you'll have islands, so downtown commercial are not connected, and then you don't have a lot that will go down, now, the floor. So, I, all the moment, very about that.
Yeah, you think first, you were hitting harder, right? We're rocking real quick, talking about.
I love the Latin town, so.
Yeah, we, you know, so, talking about, you know, like, three blocks or something, a lot, yeah.
Yeah, but it, yeah, I think if, if we're not careful and think about how the city is going to grow and. Uh, if we just allow low density, single family homes, it's going to get sprawled really quickly. Um, so then, we said, really, way out far. Yeah, it doesn't, a lot.
Such a, you know, just, you can't, you can't compare, from, when I say residential, it's, it's.
The, like, the small, you know, I mean, like, uh, four miles, or that you.
Yeah, uh, well, for, for, for. Yeah, so, yeah, all right. These, um, discussion.
Yeah.
It doesn't. Satisfying, whatever, what you're talking about, it, it doesn't mean can't do, makes you just.
And then, and then the way mixed use is fine, several areas. It's not like I've been planning about. Oh, the very high part, where it's mixed use, which is great, but the apartments have to be upstairs. So that anybody who has a hard time going upstairs, and you have seventy-year-olds, and I don't. Whatever, it's going to be tough, you know, you know, it could be that instead of. But, just the button.
Yeah, some of the downstairs mixed uses a little bit. It's subjective, I mean, it's not really getting properly used, maybe.
Yeah.
Some of that stuff is very, well, there should be, there should be a storefront here, but there's nobody renting it, so it's just my hallway upstairs.
Yeah, but I mean, I saw it, we, I had. It ended up passing away eventually, it was older, and, and again, really hard time going upstairs and. Saying, I don't, you really want this apartment, but, it's because the green developer would have put in a elevator. I feel like they were, right.
I think we do, there's a box regarding the heights. Um, and then, so just, but, I, I think that's, you know, so, maybe we're, you. That's the best influences we get for those different levels of affordability, which maybe will be contentious, but, um. There are a lot more people who need affordable than I'm helping, and it's not all in kind of one. Income bracket, it's kind of a standard to a much wider, um, definition of affordable, so I think maybe. Hopeful about this one, but it comes back to the right, if housing, making sure that we're, then, um. And we get it now, we'll, we'll, sure, from the post office, okay.
The new section of town.
Sure.
It's important to the height, it's important in density, that we keep our eyes on both of those. And until, you know, communities are using our land sufficiently. This thing I heard quite a bit during the urban growth round rediscussion, oh my god, urban sprawl, you know, and everything, you know. But, you know, that's what people's nature is, but if we're going up a little bit, maybe the density more. Enter then.
A couple of the one, yeah.
More and higher field, you know, this.
Well, I think, there are thoughts of, you know, you have. We're pretty, of what, more, can we do more bike paths, if we connect the P R T track down and get it. Their way at, like, the.
Actually, we are, but, and I have from, uh, to the P R T itself, down to, um, Build Tree Park.
Yeah, that's great.
I'm going to say way to cross. That's secret.
No, that's the vice, that's. But I'm thinking ahead, I'm thinking of a new section of town especially, and connecting. Say you're a tourist, you come and you rent a place, and it's like town, and you're a mountain biker. Cool to have, not, we're known for this, right, probably, you know, out of the, would be very interesting for the. Like that, I have a pedestrian corridor, yeah, that goes down north, south, south, north, you know, you're. Getting across plenty, and soon the bypass, I mean, we have to be able to give people safety across there. You know, they're all, again. There you go.
Now, I cut, I just cut it down, but it's, I think, across, that's getting the summer on a bike.
You sit off your bike and you hold it, and I get, you yell at me.
No, no, it's like, doesn't matter, because they make that the right way anyway, they don't even know that pedestrians have the right over.
It was Oregon, yeah, pedestrian has the right, but pedestrian, if it's a non-signal, um, crossing, you can't complete the full traffic. It's big one. You know, so jam blocking is legal in Oregon, as long as you're not completing the full traffic.
But I think there's opportunities for, 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 through the area, by the process, to make that fundamental concept of. Fundamental science versus having to, like, retrofit and, and system out.
Back to what we do with how I get. We're all doing like, you're playing, you're playing properly. We're really nice to the pedestrian, but they were.
But just real quickly, I won't get you out of here.
Yeah.
We're on the road, right? Should we start it?
Please.
So, just, uh, just letting you know, one of the council's host lines too. With, studying additional minor modifications and signature trigger law regulations. I don't, I don't sense that there's a real.
I mean, I only looked at that five times.
I shouldn't have put this out there, I don't think there's a real appetite amongst the majority of the council to.
Right, you know?
We've, we've got to shut up, and I was like, a dozen times, yeah. Excuse Matt Shivers, right?
Everyone's really cool and chill, though.
Yeah. I think, I think it was mostly, uh, pinpointed or focused to the idea of, uh, owner operated, uh, ability for owner. The record, and all is actually living with their, absolutely, not in their status, not be subject to the, uh, the, the requirements, but. I don't sense that that's anything going through the council. Uh, then develop a process to monitor the effectiveness, effectiveness of protocols. Uh, we haven't really figured out what that is, I mean, occasionally, you know, uh, for a year or two, or maybe we, uh, administer it, bring it back to a point for sure, council and say. Here's what, here's what the results are, here's what we're, here's how the people are taking advantage of it. When it's smooth, it's sound, it's, it's true, my tweet was, I don't think it's.
You know, it'd be a good test case, the new, uh, train code. Yeah, and changing the, see if that's real, that will be effective, yeah.
All right, so thank you for preparing what those two, uh, any final thoughts, part of that, some things that. It was good feedback on the efficiency that we used, and, and that was since, uh, these, I'm probably extremely bad. Maybe that's enough, but, 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 I don't know, thoughts or. Things that, that.
Thank, and you guys, you guys make our job easy. So, thank you.
I'm missing the next meeting, it's the best meeting of the year.
Funny person, yeah, you know, I don't think this is a meeting in, what it's called today is my birthday.
No, I, 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 I was up right on my, I see, and I even showered before I came here, but.
You know, when you're next to there, I'll, yeah, oh, yeah, if I wasn't, I'm like, sorry.
We need to talk about ideas, fun stuff, so I, yeah, when I, when I read the paper, was, it was like, you, you did, it was a good job. So, with, and then, and then move forward with everything, I know, I don't get it, but.
You can, what you can do is you could do this for real, but.
Same, sure.
Cool, no, awesome. When you're sending out the package. Well, um, obviously, next Tuesday, uh, it technically doesn't, we send out, up there with, before that, next week. So, we, we start next week.
Awesome. Cool, I'll send some written thoughts.
Yeah. Awesome, uh, and then just a quick update, we, uh, we, uh, posted the associate buyer. Uh, maybe a position, uh, we advertise it anywhere, it's a supply, or it's associate plan, or a supply, or a true. Uh. Main tree level, the, the, associate plan, the higher level, we kind of advertised it as both, to see what kind of response it did. Uh, I think, you got, like, a hundred forty, I think, it was.
Oh, I know.
That's the journey also not qualified. Uh, but we have some one that we should do, but, uh, so, we're still carrying it down, uh, in a couple of years, so, we'll use it over the next, uh, first. Uh, in a reason, a couple of weeks, kind of, or, but, kind of, a virtual, kind of, free streaming, like, bring some books on site. Uh, after that, you know, to see what we got, and, 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 the deposition, so, and then, I guess, uh. Well, busy, we, 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 we can see how much, anyway, it was doing, so, it's following, so, we're managing it. It might not, it might not get right back to you on phone call, but, but, so we're managing it. And so, uh, Washington Carroll, Beverly Gray, Washington, those. Because, uh, we'll turn, uh, so, we're, we're managing, but we, we definitely want to definitely should go. I can't believe, there's somebody in the environment, right, now, there's stuff, quite a lot of urban developments. I don't know if you guys have seen the. We're both, uh, the, the, uh. Right back, sister coffee there, and the soup, that's where, guy started a little bit of rock arguing, I think it was first. Have you seen that proposal?
No, but I heard you, great line, that's cool, yeah.
That's all you're going to tell us?
Oh, they're, 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 warehouse with apartments above and, yeah.
Uh. Yeah. It's like, we're waiting on the application, we've heard, there's, there's, being an application, at some point, built to get on, so.
Thought it was really cool that, that we've got all the maintenance place got built and the trades.
Yeah, it's very, very, by the same time, yeah.
That was amazing, whoever did that should, I don't know if that was stuck down, or if that was, they had a, a economic development, or.
Were they running, running science, but I always drove by, I'm, right, yeah. Right, so let's say we're that big.
Right, me neither, but I love, that's, I was worried about, yeah, there's, and.
Yeah, peace.
Oh. Fire protect.
Yeah, and the heart, that, that would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, they provide, maybe, by, this whole context, like, would provide. In emergency response, um, or a cruise response, so, thank, um, fire cams. Uh, bathroom, so these cooking facilities, residential, so the, so there, who prioritize. Uh, quickly to the, the, to. Disaster response.
Right, we, we were saying wildfire, but they would go to hurricane relief, do all those kinds of things.
Yeah, we were going, they're going to have more and more business.
We're done.
And their, their headquarters, like, they have regional, such a, date, uh. Sound. But, yeah. Oh, our, but.
That's good to keep.
Great, I thought, you know.
I think with some synergy with, uh, availability of, 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 ability, and the, they have.
They said, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, you should, uh, we can not, you know, in central Oregon, so, so.
Street, there's a lot of, there's, yeah. Street, yeah, I think he was a big part of that. Oh. All right, thank you all, see you.